Call this workshop, work session meeting to order of the San Marcos City Council. It is 3:00. Due to the fact that I had shoulder surgery yesterday and my arm is in a sling, Mr. Gleason is going to conduct this meeting and handle the gavel today.
Okay, so we'll call to order this workshop at 3:00 PM. And, Ms. Trevino, can we have a roll?
Yes, Mr. Prather, Ms. Scott, Mr. Gleason.
Hi.
Mayor Houston.
Hi.
Ms. Garza.
Oh, here.
Ms. Garza. Mr. Gonzalez. And Mr. Mendoza.
Here.
Do we have Ms. Garza?
Yeah, she's on. She has a white screen. I don't.
And I can't get into my computer right this minute, so as soon as I can, I'll be on screen.
Yes, ma'am.
In the meantime, I'm gonna go get my laptop.
Mayor, do you have your state or comments, citizen comment, your list? Citizen.
Uh, just down to here.
Okay, and we move on to citizen comment period. Do we have anybody signed up, Ms. Trevino?
Yes, Ms. Gabrielle Moore.
Okay. Or start, I might go ahead and read the rules for citizen comment period. The city council welcomes regular verbal and written comments at regular meetings. Persons wishing to speak during citizen comment period portion of the meeting must have emailed citizencomment@sanmarcostx.gov prior to noon of the day of the meeting. A call and number and link were provided. Speakers may speak once during citizen comment period. If a citizen speaks during the citizen comment period on a public hearing topic, they may not speak again during the public hearing portion on the same topic. A timer will be displayed on the screen. After you state your name, you have three minutes to speak. When you begin speaking, you will be in the green on the timer. When you have 20 seconds, you will be in the yellow. When the timer turns red, your time is up. The mayor and council wish to endeavor to ensure that the meetings are conducted in a courteous manner and an atmosphere free of defamation, intimidation, personal affronts, profanity, and threats of violence. This is the people's house, even online. Members of the public shall conduct themselves in a courteous manner and shall not engage in shouting, defamation, intimidation, personal affronts, profanity, threats of violence, or other similar behavior that impedes or disrupts the orderly conduct of the meeting. I expect everyone to be polite to council, staff, and everyone else. And so, Ms. Moore, go ahead.
Hi, Gabrielle Moore, 814 North Loop Street. I'm here to talk about the Kratic Traffic Calming Project, sometimes referred to as the Kratic Bike Lane. So I was at both public meetings for the project and I think the mayor's directive was to implement it and then come back and see how it was received by the public. That second meeting, that second public meeting, the public was overwhelmingly in favor of it. I think it was like 90% in favor versus two to one in favor on the online survey. So it was already in favor, but it increased tremendously. People liked the traffic calming effects that it had, especially so close to the elementary school. What people were expressing that they desired more of was more traffic calming and could be obtained by utilizing bollards or we call the armadillos, which we've seen with bikens on Guadalupe, for example, and LBJ. Those would be very useful and would achieve what people are wanting more of. So I think it's been a success. I also really want to express that bike lanes are utilized more when they have connectivity. Sorry, I didn't silence my phone. And this is a bike lane that is by itself and not connected to any other bike lanes. At some point, we will have something on Old Rant Road, or Sesame's Old Rant Road 12 also. But we need to have it, you know, to continue down the other end of Kratic and over to Wonder World Drive. That's when people feel safe to participate in multimodal transportation, which we definitely want to encourage more of and have fewer cars and have less congestion because we have fewer cars and people participating in active transportation. And really happy with the project and just want it to be even stronger. Thanks.
No more.
No one else signed up to speak?
No, sir.
Okay. All right.
She's not gonna sign up, speak at this meeting. I just got a text.
That's perfect, thank you. And then, so, we're moving on to presentations.
Receive a staff presentation regarding the Kratic Avenue buffered bike lane pilot project and provide direction to staff.
Good, Ms. Trevino.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. In 2021, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved a transportation master plan amendment to install a buffered bike lane on Kratic Avenue utilizing a travel lane in each direction. In consideration of this amendment, city council directed staff to install temporary bike lanes using paint and conduct a pilot project to assess the lane reduction and bike lane impacts to traffic operations and safety. City staff has completed the pilot project and Mr. Sabasavila, Director of Public Works, will present the results of the traffic study and community feedback. City staff is requesting council's direction to maintain or remove the temporary bike lanes on Kratic Avenue. I'll now turn it over to Mr. Avila.
Good afternoon, council members. Sabasavila, Director of Public Works. As Ms. Reyes indicated, this is a presentation of the Kratic Avenue Bike Lane Pilot Project. With this presentation, we will review the traffic results of the pilot project. We will review community input and feedback. And last, we will seek city council direction regarding whether to remove the bike lane or maintain the bike lane permanently. To provide you some background, in 2018, city council approved, I'm sorry, next slide. In 2018, city council approved the transportation master plan. The transportation master plan identified several goals, among others, including create a multimodal transportation network to improve accessibility and mobility for all modes, minimize congestion, and reduce pollution. Two, create a safe environment for bicycles. It is also important to note that the transportation master plan identified the future cross-section of Kratic Avenue as a four-lane boulevard with buffered bike lanes. In 2021, the Planning and Zoning Commission submitted TMP amendments for city council to consider a lane reduction to install buffered bike lanes in conjunction with the Kratic Avenue repaving project in 2022. In 2022, city council approved the pilot project on Kratic Avenue utilizing temporary paint in order to install buffered bike lanes for the purpose of analyzing the impacts and feasibility of the buffered bike lane. The, in response to city council's direction, city staff developed a pilot project. The project scope included: Conduct a pilot project of buffered bike lanes on Kratic Avenue from Bishop Street to Old Rant Road 12. Utilize existing travel lanes and temporary striping to install the buffered bike lanes. And three, analyze and identify traffic operations and safety issues, including but not limited to congestion, speeding, accidents, and bypass traffic. Finally, city council asked that these findings be sent back to city council for a decision on whether to maintain the on-street bike lanes. Next slide. In addition to analyzing Kratic Avenue, the pilot project also included a study of Franklin Drive for indirect impacts such as bypass traffic. Next slide. This slide represents the before and after cross-sections of Kratic Avenue. Prior to the pilot study, Kratic Avenue was a four-lane roadway with an off-street hike and bike trail. During the pilot study, the cross-section was changed to include an eight-foot bike lane with a three-foot buffer utilizing an existing vehicle travel lane. Next slide.
Dude, I can't hear you. You're speaking into the mic.
Yeah, I was saying, the buffered lanes on that photo, there's that eight wide solid, is that the white cones that were on the?
No, sir. That represents the width of the bike lane, eight foot. And the three foot is a buffered striped, it's a striped buffer. So it's a three-foot section of striping.
I noticed a lot of those white cones that were on these roads, they're no longer there. Is there a story behind that, or?
On Kratic Avenue, we didn't include delineators.
Like on Hunter?
You're thinking of Hunter.
Yeah.
On Hunter, yes. We had physical barriers on Hunter Road. However, those barriers were continuously hit and subsequently we removed those and we're reevaluating other physical barriers that might work. All right, next slide. So this slide represents the traffic study results. Overall, the bike lane had really no impact to capacity on Kratic Avenue. If you look at the volume, the volume stayed basically the same from 7,700 before the project to 7,800 after the project. Accidents increased very nominally from one accident to two. And the level of service stayed the same. That, it went from, it stayed from C to C. And last, the bike volume increased slightly from 18 to 24. However, the biggest impact that the bike lane had on Kratic Avenue is a reduction of speed. The speed reduced from 44 miles per hour to 41 miles per hour. For Franklin Street, the speed reduced significantly from 36 to 24. However, this speed reduction is specifically related to speed humps that were installed during the pilot project. The traffic volume went down approximately 700 vehicles per day, and the number of accidents went down from one to zero. The project included two public meetings as well as an online survey. The first public meeting had 29 individuals in support of the project and 32 opposed. For the second public meeting, 59 individuals were in support of the bike lanes and eight were opposed. Looking at the online survey, 66 were in support and 33 were opposed. Some of the common comments that we received included: We are in favor of bike lanes, but I am not in favor of using the existing travel lanes. Second, this is a lot of effort for very few bikers. And last, Kratic speeds are high. The bike lanes will help to slow down traffic. Next slide. Based on this pilot project, city staff recommends maintaining the striped buffered bike lanes on Kratic Avenue for the following reasons. The bike lanes have contributed to reduced speeds and served as a traffic calming measure. Bike lanes have no negative impact to traffic capacity. The striped bike lanes can be converted back to travel lanes if warranted in the future. And last, the bike lanes allow the city to fulfill transportation master plan goals until the master plan is fully implemented. Next slide. This concludes my presentation. I am happy to answer any questions that you might have. And we specifically seek city council direction on the following two, on the following question. Does city council prefer to maintain the existing buffered bike lanes or remove the bike lanes?
All right, thank you, Ms. Trevino. And then, council, we have the two questions that they have here that staff would like answers to, and so now is your time for questions. And I see Mr. Scott has his hand up.
Yeah, Mr. Trevino, so the question that I had was, did you monitor other than Franklin, any other existing exits and entrance and vehicular traffic during this survey? The reason why I ask you is because you said there's no impact on traffic. There's not being traffic survey, impact on traffic survey if everybody still has to go to work. You're still, the same people are still going to work, so you're not measuring whether they took different routes or whether they took different, you know, ways to go to work and that no longer included them in that survey. Did you count for that?
For this pilot project, we looked at Kratic Avenue and Franklin Drive. Franklin Drive being the closest neighborhood street, neighborhood collector, to Kratic Avenue. So the study that you're proposing is an origin destination study?
See, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. I have more questions. So yes or no is the answer I'm looking for here. Either did or did.
For participants.
The answer to your question is no, we did not conduct an origin destination study to determine what routes people are taking.
Okay, the next one, question is, what is, I don't know what the speed limit is on Kratic. What is, what is the speed limit on Kratic? I'm not Kratic, I'm sorry.
It is 30 miles per hour. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
The speed limit is 35 miles per hour.
On?
On Kratic.
On Kratic, okay. Okay, yeah, that was the other thing that I had, just to see if we're, you know, we're measuring things that are gonna be there anyway. That was it, thank you.
Mr. Prather?
If we can go back to the two questions you want us answered, yes, I'm fully in favor of keeping the bike lanes on Kratic Avenue. One, it's, I'm not an engineer, but I believe the term is road diet.
Yes.
You know, it does make people drive slower. I know we're talking about Kratic, but you know, Kratic, you know, it seemed like it was a four-lane highway, you know, before this, you know, people were driving way too fast down there. And this is a means to help slow those speeds. I know one of the comments was about not seeing many people utilizing the bike lanes. Well, you know, when we provide these types of options, our ultimate goal is to try to increase the number of people using their bikes or electronic scooters. But yeah, I'm in full favor of buffered bike lanes. The one thing I'm kind of just not sure on is the, is the whites.
Delineators.
What are they called?
Delineators.
Yeah, delineators. I can understand coming into intersections like on Wonder World and Hunter, you know, that's a, you know, major intersection. You really wanna help guide people, but when you drive down an entire block, especially Kratic, that we put in, you know, all that money and some of the landscaping, I mean, it is a really beautiful road and, you know, people, you want people to stop and kind of smell the roses with it, with the landscaping. But yeah, fully in favor of bike lanes, helps slower speed. We wanna make those kind of investments and encourage more people to ride their bikes and electronic scooter-type transportation. That's all I got.
Okay. And the next is Ms. Garza?
Um, thank you, Mr. Gleason. I think Mr. Prather captured my thoughts well. I will say personally, bicyclists on the road make me anxious, but to his point, like, I think the biggest concern that I've heard is that it's a whole lot of, it's a whole lot of work for very few people, but I think the more folks we can get on, get to use them and encourage to use, I think it's worthwhile. I appreciate all the statistics and stuff. It really helps to bunk a lot of what people are like perceiving, to see the numbers and like what's actually happening.
Is that it, Ms. Garza? Thank you. And then, Mayor, can you say?
People keep asking me if I ever see anybody on a bike, on a bike, on Kratic, which I do drive regularly, almost every day. My answer is always, I saw more before we striped the bike lanes, and I don't know why that is. I'm good with leaving it there, but I would like for us to check in again before we do anything permanent on there, but I'm good for leaving it as it is. But what I'm hearing from people is because it's one lane, it's slowing everybody down because before, if somebody was driving 35, people weren't, people were passing them. And now, that, you know, whenever you've got people driving at the speed limit or a little slower, everybody has to. And that's what I'm hearing from people, and they like that. My concern is that someday we may need both lanes, and so I'm good with leaving it that way, but before we do anything permanent, I think we need to look at, to look at it one more time. How do we capture the bike numbers?
Through traffic counts. So we hire a contractor to, and most contract, traffic counting contractors use video now, so they will video for 24 hours and then count.
Watch the video?
Exactly.
Yeah, I wondered how that was happening, so, okay.
Head, Mayor? All right, Mr. Mendoza, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Gleason. First, staff, thank you very much. I appreciate the study that you guys have done. I think this is a step in the right direction, especially when it comes to established neighborhoods. I think that this is just great. Are we going to continue the armadillos for these, or are we looking at a different protective?
So the city is looking at different types of physical barriers throughout the city right now. The barriers that were used on Hunter Road were not effective and maintenance-wise were not sustainable. So we, over the next year, we're gonna be trying different delineators and physical barriers to see which one works best and which one provides the best life.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate your allowing the citizens to put their input and really taking it to heart. Thank you, sir.
Is that it, Mr. Mendoza?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Scott has his hand back up.
I'm sorry, Mark, I didn't mean to raise it.
Okay. Okay, anybody else have any other comments? I had a couple of questions, and you, I think you got two. My one was the timeframe of the study. Were these done at multiple different times for 24-hour periods, to capture some weekends, some weekdays? How long was that time, what was the study, the timeframe on the study?
So we actually conducted three 24-hour study counts. One 24-hour prior to the installation of the bike lanes in late March, or early March, sorry. The second was done in late April before school was released. And then, the third was conducted in early September after the students had returned.
Okay, that's good. You know, I just had some more questions about whether the students were here and also whether implications. It's nice to see maybe we were a little spring, a little fall, not the middle of summer to capture all the heat. And the speed bumps, the speed reductions done on Franklin, they were done before any of these traffic studies were done, is that correct?
Yes, we had been in progress of conducting neighborhood surveys for the speed humps on Franklin Drive, so that was in progress before the pilot study was begun.
I was really glad that was included in that because, you know, when we talk about speed reduction, things that can be done in neighborhoods, I think this clearly showed that it had an impact on speed and also the volume of cars cutting through between Rant Road 12 and Kratic, so I was really glad to see that. One of the things you brought up was maintenance also, and that's one of the big questions a lot of people have, is that when we separate these lanes out, that it creates a lot of debris, and I even heard from some people who bike who were struggling with the amount of debris on those. Can you get into a little more explanation about exactly what we have planned for the future for maintenance of those?
Yes, so, two years ago, the city purchased a narrow street sweeper for the purpose of sweeping narrow bike lanes. And as you indicated, when you have a bike lane, that's where a lot of debris tends to collect. So with this narrow street sweeper, we are able to collect a lot of the debris within the bike lanes.
Okay, and that's not gonna change that that device will work no matter what we probably, I guess we'll work around the barriers that put in that that device will still work?
Yes, so our street sweeper, our narrow street sweeper is seven foot wide, so we have learned that if we put in bike lanes, they should be at least eight feet in order to accommodate the street sweeper.
Okay. I wanted to clarify that with some people, constituents in the community who were curious about how we're gonna have upkeep on these and why, one of the reasons the bike lanes are so wide is because some of the equipment that's been purchased to maintain this.
Yes.
You know, initially, I was against the Kratic additional lanes, and one of the other things, I guess we can kind of, I can kind of clarify for everybody, or you could for us, is the cost involved with this. This was in coordination with a mill overlay project that was already planned. Can you maybe lay out that a little bit of timeline a little more for everybody about the cost involved of the striping on Kratic?
Sure. So the city had already scheduled a repaving project for Kratic Avenue. So whenever you repave a roadway, you're basically taking off the top layer. So what that means is that when you replace the top layer, you're also gonna have to replace the striping. So since we did this project in coordination with the repaving project, there were really no additional costs because we had to restripe that roadway anyway.
Okay, good. I just wanted to declare that for the public because a lot of the pushback was that the amount of money put into this for, it seemed it was, it looked like a separate project, but it was done in coordination with a mill overlay project, that there wasn't a lot of an additional cost to this. You know, initially, I was kind of against this, and partially because I would love to see that dual-use path improved down through there. I do bike around town, not as much as I'd like to, but I like those dual-use paths. I know that it does create some issues with pedestrians and bicycles, but I've always felt safer even at night, even on a divided pathway of going and being separated out from the motorists, and that curb does give me some protection. And so, you know, in the future, whenever these projects come up, I will always push for a shared dual-use path. I think getting them off the roads, and especially for a road that was pushed for by the community to add additional lanes and capacity on Kratic, for us to take that away. So like the mayor was saying, I'm okay for leaving these up, and you know, this wasn't an expensive project. It's still kind of in test phase, but I do wanna look at this again before, especially as capacity changes and growth happens, and also what it would cost to improve that. I know that dual-use path is a little paved and a lot of crushed granite, and I know a lot of people are uncomfortable riding on that, that what those costs would include and all of that. I just wanna keep that in mind that when we review this, that we look at those dual-use path and according to it. So I think that's all I have on that, and I think we've gotten everybody to weigh it. Ms. Houston has her, Mayor Houston has her hand up again.
My only question was, you noted that there were accidents. Were those car, bicycle, were bicycles involved in either of those accidents?
No, ma'am. Neither of those accidents were related to the bike lane or cyclist.
All right, thank you.
The one other thing I'll request, too, kind of going back on that, too, is The one other thing I'll request too, kind of going back on that too, is I would love when we do a traffic study to include the use of the dual use path, if that's possible, of how many pedestrians potentially be walking on that, because those improvements would be for pedestrians, not just bicyclists too, that those be included in the future. I think that's all I have. Does anybody else have any questions? And staff have anything else, they need anything else from us?
Council members, to clarify your direction, would you like this to come back a year from now, two years from now, five years?
For me, it was before we do anything permanent. That, that's all I ask, unless, unless something happens, you know, and one of us could put it, you know, we can put it on the agenda, we can talk to y'all if, if there's other concerns, but I'm good with it for now.
I think that's a great, you know, unless we want to do some permanent, like a curb cut or something, yeah, it's, it's fine the way it is.
Yeah, or any other infrastructure projects that need to be done out there. You know, I know a lot of that has been done, but in the future, if something big needs to be done, it needs to be reviewed at that time. So I'm with the mayor on this one.
Because I'm, I'm with you. If we can separate it and get it off the street, that's much safer and that would be, that would always be my preference. I don't want to spend the money to do that here now because that's not budgeted. So I'm good with the striping, which I think it was a good way, economical way to test. And I'm good.
Thank you. All right, I think that's all for that one. And then we have item number two.
Receive a staff presentation update on the Sesame Drive traffic calming initiative.
Mr. Condor.
Good afternoon. Did you want to say something's happening?
Go ahead, we're good.
All right. Sean Condor, Director of Engineering Capital Improvements, here to talk about the Sesame Drive Traffic Calming Initiative. For this presentation, it's more of an FYI, an update, I'm not seeking any direction, but we wanted to kind of give you an update of this project because it was pulled from the agenda when the TNP amendment was discussed with the Craddock Avenue. So it felt like it was a good time to give you an update on the project. So give you a little bit of a project background. It's very similar to Craddock, the 2018, the city council did approve the TNP. I did want to add a little note that in about 2020 timeframe, we started receiving comments from citizens that, hey, we got the TNP with all these bike lanes. Can we look at maybe starting the process and including them with mill and overlays and other CIP projects? So that's kind of what got the ball rolling on the TNP amendment. And so that did, staff sat down, we reviewed all the bike lane projects in great detail against the TNP and decided, you know, these projects do need some revisions, and that's why that TNP amendment was made forward. And we did look at some CIP projects and some mill overlays to make sure we do try and include these bike lane restriping projects with those. So that was taken to PNC in 2021, and one of the recommendations was to convert Sesame from a shared use path to a buffered bike lane. Council did adopt it in 2021, and staff included the buffered bike lanes in the Sesame Academy Street Improvements Project, which started construction, started construction in 2022. Next slide. And so I wanted to lay out the TNP to kind of show that bike lane network connectivity we're talking about. And you can see Sesame's there right in the middle. We've got bike lanes already connected on North LBJ, Sesame to the east, Comanche and Holland. Old Rento 12 is in design, we should start construction next two or three years, that'll create that connectivity to the Craddock project that Mr. Avila was just speaking of. So this is a pretty important keys, piece to that TNP. And as you mentioned, it's, we talked about bike lanes, you can't just build one section expecting to be used, you got to build that network slowly over time. So the, the better we get this network built, the longer we make these travel lanes or connectivity, the more bikers we can get out on the road and get them off driving. Next slide. So similar to Craddock, the, the council direction was to perform a before and after study of each project, and it was, we wanted to treat them separately. So that's why we're kind of breaking them out here, we're doing Sesame and Craddock independently. We are not near as far in the process on Sesame. But it was to implement the recommended cross section, which included bike lanes, and to perform an after study approximately six to 12 months once the bike lanes were implemented, gather public input after the bike lanes, the study is completed, and then bring it back to council. Next slide. So if you've been out to Sesame lately, you notice it's under construction, it's been under construction for a while. And so right now, we have two separate projects, independent of each other, in construction. On the section closer to North LBJ, you got the Sesame Creek Improvements Project, which started in the summer of 2021, and that's roughly from, let's call it Loquat to LBJ, where it's been down to one lane in each direction. We're doing there for stabilizing Sesame Creek and replacing the wastewater main. That project is on track to be completed this summer. And then on the west side of Sesame, between Comanche and Holland, that's the Sesame Academy Street and Drains Improvements Project. That started in the summer of 2022. It's on track to be done about summer, spring 2024. We'll know a little bit more here in a few months. That project is to put in water, wastewater, add some drainage improvement, and probably the biggest thing it's doing is it putting a traffic signal at Sesame and Academy. With that project, that's where we put in the proposed buffered bike lanes. And so once all that's done, the, the plan is to put buffered bike lanes from Holland all the way to LBJ. Next slide. So what are we trying to address? And this is where, you notice the title is the Sesame Traffic Calming Initiative and not the Sesame Bike Lanes. I think that's important because we're achieving multiple goals with these bike lanes, not just adding bike lanes. We're trying to address excessive speeding. We're trying to address traffic safety. We're going to try and reduce those traffics, it's a windy road, narrow road, so you have a lot of side swipes. We want to create a pedestrian buffer, get that space between the cars and the pedestrians, not just the cars and the bikes. And then we're going to implement the buffered bike lanes as recommended by the TNP. Just like Craddock, if we find that there's issues in the future, we, it's just driving, and we have the ability to address it, to remove them and pursue alternative measures for the TNP in the future, whether it be five, 10, 20 years down the road. I do want to point, I've heard a lot of folks mention, we need to evaluate this in the future. Will we do? With every TNP update, we're evaluating this. Do these roads have the capacity? We're taking the traffic counts, we're seeing if they need to be widened. So that is looked at regardless every five years. All right, next slide. So these are just some cross sections of the road, and if you've driven out Sesame, you know, they're pretty narrow as you go down it, and they're about 10 to 10 and a half foot lane width. What we're proposing to do is go back with the 12 foot lane with a three foot buffer and a six foot bike lane. And so what's good about this slide is it kind of shows that what that bike lane does is it gives that extra buffer I was talking about earlier between the pedestrians and the traffic. And we want to keep, because it's a hill downhill, real steep, again, we want to keep the pedestrians and the bikes separate because the bicyclist can go pretty fast too. And although I know there's the, the talk about mixing them, which that does work and some people feel safer off the road, but some bicyclists are going really fast and they have a hard time navigating those pedestrians. So if you have the ability to create an off, off-street section or on-street section, that can be preferred in certain scenarios. Next slide. So this is just an example of what's out there today. And so the top picture shows is if you just turned off Comanche, you're looking towards Academy Street. You can see it's, it's four lanes, and what we do is just take those outside lanes and put some extra thick striping on there, if you will, and put the bike lanes on the outer ledge. The bottom represents if you turn from Comanche, you're going towards LBJ. And what this represents is, shows that how steep it is going down and that curve, you really can't see it on the corner. What I like about this picture is it also shows the traffic control that we have in place showing, it's been closed for one lane since the summer of 2021. So it's been over a year, a year and a half, and we have not had any issues with traffic on this stretch between Loquat and LBJ. I will note, we do open up at the intersection, and that helps relieve that congestion at the intersection. The Sesame bike lane will do that as well, it will be that similar configuration where we continue to have five lanes, if you will, at the intersection. I will also note that before this project is under construction, you have always had congestion on Sesame when school lets out. So that was not a problem associated with this project, it's always been there, just Texas State likes to let their folks out at five and some of the, I guess, the between classes occasionally get some backups, but that's something that you're going to have regardless of your lane configuration. But it will not be impacted by this project. Next slide. So the after study, what are we trying to address with the study? Now, we've collected the before data, we have not started digging through it to prepare the report, we kind of wait till we do the after. But one thing we want to know is can Sesame Drive handle the lane reductions? And so when you think about a lot of, that's the first thing people say, you can't handle it, it's got way too much traffic on there. Well, if you, if you look around town, there's several streets that are already carrying those traffic volumes that only have two lanes. And so Sesame has an average traffic count of about 12,834 vehicles. Well, Moore Street at Lindy has a little over 10,000. North WJ on the north side of campus between Sesame and Holland, that carries a little over 13,000. Post Road, 12,840. And the Hunter Road is the highest, Hunter at San Antonio, that has over 18,000, again, one lane in each direction, similar what we're doing in Sesame. So we know that the, the volumes can be handled by a two lane configuration, but we need to, by doing the study, we can verify that. Is traffic slowing down? Just, one of the keys is, is when you're just on Craddock, again, you take it, go from one to two, now those vehicles are driving the speed limit, they help slow down all the other folks. So we anticipate it will slow down traffic. On top of that, we're putting a signal at Sesame and Academy, so we know that will help slow down the traffic. Are bike lanes being used? That's the question we always hear. And again, we don't know the answer, we know the answer will be yes. How many? That's a different question. And so over time, as this network is created, we anticipate the volumes going up, and so we'll evaluate that with this after study. And are the traffic conditions safer? Again, we anticipate they are. By going from one, two lanes to one, we get that side swipe traffic conflict out of, out of the way. We do think it'll help slow down the traffic, so, which should help slow down and make them safer. And then is there too much congestion? And I kind of talked about it earlier, but when you talk about congestion, it's typically at the intersections, it's not between the intersections. So when you look at what we're doing, we are maintaining a wider cross section at Sesame and Academy, Sesame and Comanche, Sesame and LBJ, and Holland. So we are not, we're keeping it wide through those intersections, which should alleviate the congestion that might be anticipated by this type of project. But again, the after study will evaluate that and will, will verify that then. Next slide. So timeline, as I mentioned, we are not near as far as we are on Craddock. Back in March 2022, we collected some data for the before study. We held a public meeting, started construction in May of 2022. Right now, we're in the middle of construction, and we anticipate construction being wrapped up in the spring of 2024 with the striping of the bike lanes. And then we're going to try and gather some data in the summer of 2024, hold a public meeting in the fall, and then follow that with council direction in the winter. And this timeline is critical because in the spring of 2025, Public Works is in the process of getting a grant which will mill and overlay over 50% of this project. They're getting a grant from Alamo Street, which is really close, it's between Comanche and Academy. So they're going to mill and overlay from Alamo Street all the way to Aquaman Springs. So again, regardless of what we decide today, they're going to have to restripe it again. And so our ideal goal is to get that final direction from council then, so that when we do that mill and overlay in 2025, we can go back and save some costs on if we have to revert back to a four lane configuration. So let's, next slide. So again, I just wanted to give you an update on the project and open up for questions, but we are not seeking direction today.
All right, thank you, Mr. Condor. So council members, do you have any questions?
Can I just hear the time, the month and, and year of when those projects are going to be finished?
They're coming along good.
Well, thanks for the presentation, and staff, do you need anything else from us on this one? No? Okay. And we'll move on to item number three.
Executive session accordance with the following. A, Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code Personnel Matters to deliberate the duties of the city manager related to the upcoming meet and confer negotiations with the San Marcos Police Officers Association. And Section 551.071, consultation with the city attorneys regarding legal matters related to the upcoming meet and confer negotiations. B, Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code Personnel Matters to hold discussion regarding the city attorney position.
Seeking a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
And can we have a roll call?
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
And Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
The motion has a six to zero.
All right, and we're headed to executive session at 3:40.
Did y'all hear me? Sorry, aye.
3:45. At 5:42, Ms. Reyes, did we have any speakers signed up?
No.
Or Ms. Trevino, I'm sorry. No?
No.
Seen none? Motion to adjourn?
Second, second.
Second, by Mr. Scott. Motion by Mr. Scott, second by Mr. Mendoza. And then let's have a roll call.
All right, Mr. Scott, Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?